All council members are present, yes. We're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance. We've asked Jacob Zantz to lead us, and then Diane Moss will give the opening remarks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Council? entertain a motion?
Mayor, make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Motion by Eric, second by Diana, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is our royalty here? I saw them assembling in the parking lot. Okay.
I like the new, uh, I like the new interface to the email.
Oh, yes?
The one web interface, it's much easier to use.
Really?
Yeah, the other one sucked.
Not used to it yet? Well, I just, I'm not used to it, I'll get used to it. Oh, I haven't tried it on my phone yet.
Okay. We'll come back to, we'll come back to their presentation. Let's go ahead and go to Scott, and he's going to present the Leadership Academy graduates.
Mayor and council, we have what we call our Leadership Academy that we do with our city employees. And this is something that we've been doing for three years now. We've had six different iterations of the academy. And what it is, is we have ten employees come in, and we read a book together. The book is called Endurance. It's about a mission to Antarctica and a famous explorer, Charles Shackleton, that took this group down there, and they had a goal in mind of what they wanted to do. And as they got down there, their ship got, in essence, destroyed in the ice. And then it's a story of survival and them getting back home. The story takes place in nineteen seventeen, eighteen, right around that time. So, the communication wasn't very good back then, and nobody knew their circumstance and what was going on, and they had to figure out a getaway back home. So, it's a fascinating story. We read the book, and then we talk about the leadership principles that are used throughout the book. We list those principles on the whiteboard, and then each individual that's part of the academy will pick a leadership principle that they will train the rest of the group on. It's a, I, I think it's a great exercise, something that we do. It takes us about three months to get through it. The employees, for one, we make sure we have different representation from different departments, so that we have employees that get to know each other. I mean, generally speaking, our public works and like our library don't interact, because they do totally different things even though they work for the same city. So, it's a way for employees to get to know each other, but also a way for us to train each other and become better at our jobs, and the ways we interact and the way we provide service to our community. So, with that, each time we do this, we invite the graduates to come and receive their certificate in front of the city council as a recognition to them. So, we will start with Summer Shelton. And you can hold your applause till we get to the end, if that's okay. Summer's our city prosecutor. Spencer Carpenter. Spencer's in our Parks Department. Rick Henderson. Oh, Rick, you are here, good. Rick's one of our police officers. Kim Schroepel. Did I say that right? Okay. Kim's our victim advocate. Jerry Clark. Jerry's here. Jean Ellington. They're both public works, and they're quiet guys, and this isn't really their thing. We'll make sure they get their certificate. Daniel Cardenas. Daniel's our city planner. Brent Phillips. Brent's in our Parks Department. And Matt Redmond. Okay, now we can applaud. Matt's with our engineering department. So, good group of people, we had a great time. We don't do this over the summer because of schedules. We'll start our seventh round of this likely late in the fall, early winter, and we'll bring them back when we're done. So, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. You guys can stay or leave if you'd like to, now's a good time. Scott, do you want to introduce the next one?
The next one's gonna take a few minutes, so I don't know. Let's check with the royalty real quick.
Marty, how long is yours?
Mine's about three hours, I think, tonight.
Okay, we should probably review the May sixteenth agenda.
Let's start doing that.
Marty's will be, uh, take a shorter time than the public safety facility, so...
You wanna, go ahead. Well, you need a couple seconds. Okay.
Could we start on the agenda, Scott? Do you want to go through next week's agenda? Oh, never mind.
Okay, our Strawberry Days royalty. Sure.
You want to grab, grab that microphone, it's, it's portable. You talk right into that.
There's a bunch of us here, so...
Yeah, speak right into the tip.
All right. Is this on? Yes, oh, there it is. All right, we're so excited to be here today and introduce ourselves. My name is Lindsay Savage, I was just recently crowned Miss Pleasant Grove. My attendants, Ansley Funes, Courtney Ricks, Sammy Joe Carson. And then, just recently, we had our Miss Strawberry Days rodeo queen. It's, her name is Johnny, she has, her two attendants were not able to make it tonight, but their names are Mikel and Sydney. Then we have our cute little, Little Miss Strawberry Days. I'm starting on this end, Sadie and McKenna, Avery and Kennedy. So, we're all excited to serve with you guys. We're kind of at whatever you want us to do, we're here to serve, and we're really excited to get to know you all a lot better, so...
Great. Well, we're really proud of you and glad that you're here with us. Can we get a photo with you?
Oh, yes.
Okay, let's do that.
We would love that, where do you want us?
Do you want them to come back behind you guys?
Sure. Or you can line up in front of us. We'll cram all in, you guys can come right here.
You don't need to see us, you guys stand in front of us.
Turn around.
We'll just stand in front of you, yeah.
This is where we do, we do a kinda...
We do these...
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Oh, wait, they have crowns.
You want us, no?
We can squat.
Yeah. Don't squat.
Okay, ready, one, two, three.
Awesome.
Cute girls.
Hey, thank you guys so much.
We look forward to working with you.
Hi.
I gave it to Marty, we've already got two here.
That night of when you guys learned that... So talented.
We're gonna have some good times.
Thanks for coming. Thank you for coming, awesome, thanks.
You did it perfect.
Thanks.
So, you know, I wish your mom's young midleader...
Awesome.
Oh, Diane, she is so Corinne.
Thanks for coming for that, you guys are awesome. I'm coming back for second, Sid, that's awesome. Hey, when you got it, you got it. That was a fun part of the meeting. That's how it always starts, fun, and then we get into your stuff.
Okay, do I have more than I should?
Okay, Scott.
Thank you.
So, next on our agenda is a discussion regarding, and we need some direction from our city council regarding the public safety facility. As we have met with the architect and the contractors as an owners committee, we, our last meeting, last Thursday, we received a recommendation from our contractor and our architect that we need to figure out a way to take the fire station down the same time that we take the rest of the buildings down, so that we can get the best project in the long run. Our initial intent was to keep the fire station up and running during the construction of both these buildings. In order to do that, we would design around the buildings. And I'm gonna have the architect, in a minute, is gonna get up and talk about how the design looks. And you've already seen most of this, because we brought it to you a couple weeks ago. But we're now finding there are becoming issues with this design. There's issues with a little bit of the visual on how it looks. And we also have some logistical issues on tearing down community development, but not the fire station. And so, there's some cost to that. So, what has happened is Big D has put together some cost estimates for us, and they're gonna, and we'll have them talk next after me. And they'll go over, here's what is costing us in order to stay with this design. Here are some money savings by changing designs and actually taking the fire station down first, meaning we have to find a temporary home for the fire station. And we'll talk a little bit briefly about that. Community development, we're already working on a temporary home for them. We're also working on a temporary home for our city council chambers as this building is being built. So, the, like I said, the intent all along was to keep the fire station running, but the more that our professionals are looking at this, they're saying this probably in the long run is not gonna be the best idea.
So, someone's going to explain why that's a good idea?
Yes, yeah, we're gonna talk about the financial aspects of that and all that. So, with that, I'll turn it to Big D, they'll go over the numbers, and then we'll turn it over to our architect, and they'll talk about the, the design.
All right, so Ben Williams here, our estimator, is the one that put these numbers together, so I'll give him credit for this. Obviously, as, as you know, we've, our mandate has been to keep the construction duration as short as possible, save money that way. So, the designers have been putting the, the building in the street. The problem we've come across is there's several costs that we gotta be realistic about. One of them, and you'll see this on the list, is this courtyard here that's gotta be created. There's a grade change there, more than likely to make that an effective entrance, you're gonna have to have some seat walls and a, a nice courtyard. We put a number on there representing that. Ben, what is the number? About, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
About forty-four. Now, keep in mind, these are very conceptual numbers, there's no design. We're throwing numbers out there, but they're, they're pretty realistic. The other issue we've got is that there's no entrance into this parking lot, and there's probably a five or six foot grade difference between the road and the parking lot. So, you're gonna have to regrade, probably lose some parking stalls in the process there, and rework that parking lot, maybe even that island. So, there's costs associated with that as well. Fifty-two thousand dollars is, is our rough conceptual number on that. The third thing is utilities that currently run down the road. Those would have to be relocated, that's gonna be problematic, because they, some of them serve the existing fire station, so that's an, I mean, it's not an, an obstacle we can't overcome, but it is a cost and a problem. And then the other, the other item that's on here that has, has kind of high level been explored, but, you know, the, all along, this isn't showing on here, but flopping off this side of this building isn't as easy as it sounds. It's electrically and mechanically very tied together, and there's gonna be some big costs to make that happen. So, two options, that, that's option one. Any questions on that before I move on?
The total of that?
The total cost?
Yeah, the total cost of that.
With this design...
Conceptually is two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars.
With these elements is two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Quarter million dollars, which is obviously very significant. So, then we look at, well, do we go back to two phases? Nobody wants to really do that, including us. That gets you into your building at least eight months later than you want to. You're gonna pay the extended general condition to have the contractor on site. That's, that's around two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand for an eight-month duration. The better option is to relocate the, the fire department, and those are the numbers we've got down below there. Just from a high level, we've researched a particular space. I won't get into what it is, because we need the fire department to vet that and make sure it works for them. But we do have numbers that are in the range of what we've got on this sheet, and we believe that's probably the best option for us to pursue. Any questions?
If I can just kind of recap that, in order to temporarily house the fire department, we're looking at a cost of probably just under a hundred thousand. But in the meantime, we save, there's, there's a cost of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand to stay with this same design. And that, that's the design that has to happen in order to keep our fire station functional during construction. So, that's the cost side of it. Is there anything else that you guys need to cover on the cost? And then Jim can talk the design side of it and what that means.
Was the quarter million part of the construction estimate?
The, uh, the forty-four, seven thirty-three, fifty-two, two ninety, and forty-five, three hundred in our first round of numbers was part of it. The hundred-and-fifteen thousand was a number that after we talked on Thursday that we needed to figure out what the cost was to, because if this building goes down, then we don't have our mechanical, electrical for the fire department to stay running. So, the one fifteen, I wouldn't say was part of our initial budget that we have, have put together. So, that's additional cost on top of that.
So, of the quarter million, the two-fifty-seven, if you take out the hundred-and-fifteen, you're looking at a hundred-and-forty-two? That's an actual cost savings of the construction budget?
Yes, from, from our initial budget that we put together, yes.
That accurate?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes, that last one, that last cost of cutting off this building, that's one that's come to light over the last week or so, as we've started to look at what does it really mean to cut off this building and learned a little bit more about the systems that are in the building and what's involved here.
We're not really picking you up on that microphone?
Oh, no, okay, we'll get a little closer here, okay. To, to address the design, as I say, the costs came up very, have started to rear their head as we've been going through that this past week in more detail. But the design that was developed, as we've talked about, was creating somewhat of an L-shaped configuration here. I think we presented this previously to you, and brought this over at this point. The thing that we're finding with that design, we've got a design that we believe works functionally, we've gone through it with the fire department, the police department internally, it, it does function. However, there's some, there's some issues that start to happen here with this, as far as with the court and with the police, that really starts to stretch this out and create functional separations there. We, and it's being driven, and then aesthetically, we're also, as we start to take this design and start to try to work it into things, I'll be honest with you, there's some, there's some issues of just how we create this and not look like it's just squeezed in up against the other building. And, and so, we're, so, so as we started to move forward with the massing and the design of it, we started to have some questions there. Now, what we've done is looked at, then we, based on the decision of saying, if the fire department was able to relocate and was to be able to move out of there to begin with, what would we do differently with the design? And some of what we're doing here is, I want to kind of dwell on the relationship of this building to the street, to the parking, and to the other, to the existing city hall here. Either of these designs do, we do create a secure yard in here that we, that's similar number of parking stalls with either design, so that doesn't change too much. But the idea that this entrance, if we're trying to come into this building at some point here to make it work functionally, where do the people park? Where do they come from? How do they approach the building? And so, basically, you've got people approaching from this side or from this side, and then we're trying to bring them down the side and into the building this way. And that's needed, because we're trying to create both a, a public presence to a more secure presence, and so, we have to kind of lay it out this direction with that. So, I wanted to show you the, as we've looked at the other, addressed this from a point of view of trying to work out a design, the front portion of this building being the more public portion, meeting, the meeting spaces, things like that. We would still look at the court up onto this area. The police wrap around now behind this area here, into this area here. It's a much more compact building, to be honest with you, and, and Big D has expressed liking that as we've presented that to them, there's less, it's, there's a little bit. But it also, the big item here is it allows us to build a building that is off of First South here. We still would suggest narrowing it and creating more of a, almost a parking lot rather than a through street here. But we can front onto this street, or the parking lot here, both, so you've still got a frontage there, it creates, makes that much better, but it also takes away, we're not building over that street and relocating utilities, we're not rebuilding, we're not, at this point, trying to rebuild over here in front of City Hall at this point. But we, it's, and it also, we believe, gives a little nicer presence up here along Second East, that we can do something with this facade and have a nicer, rather than just having a little narrower portion of the building coming up here. So, all in all, with that, we really like, we like that. It also eliminates the need to reconfigure this parking lot right here, because we can leave this access just the way it is. So, those are some of the major points that we really, we really like. Let's see, Christopher, if I push it again, will it give it that interview? So, we wanted to just kind of show you that, as I say, it allows us to really create a front to the building here where the people will actually approach the building from. And, and we like that. And so, it's, so, 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 so the combination of the approachability, the organization of the building, the compactness of the building, and the cost is the reason that we came fairly strongly on Thursday and said, "We really recommend we take another look at this." And so, but look at, trying to save this existing fire station. And so, that's what we wanted to put before you.
Yeah, so, as they presented it to the owners committee, the owners committee, committee was in favor of relocating fire department and tearing all that down and going with this design concept. One of the things that was brought up that Jim sort of mentioned was, you know, thirty years from now, with that building scoot all the way over, people are gonna look at that and think this, this is kind of weird.
Why did you squeeze that in there?
But Jim, when you say compact, what does that mean compared to?
What I'm, what I'm seeing is, it's not, this is not a huge item, but this is a more rectangular building, where the other is spread out longer, so there's more surface area on that building. It's a little more expensive building to build when you stretch, stretch it out than it is if it's all...
So, are we losing any square footage?
No, 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 it's just that where our corridors are a little shorter as we go in, or we can do a little more efficient design to the building, though, because everything's kind of around, oriented around itself there, we don't have to string things out along long corridors.
And then Chief, how do you feel about this?
I like, I like this concept, I think it, everything that Jim's talked about, about the way it sits on the block, I think it looks better that way, and it has a better feel to it. And it doesn't, it doesn't diminish anything that we were going to do with the other concept. You know, the biggest, the biggest part about this actually affects Chief Thomas. So, you can speak to that.
So, part of this is my fault, because they talked about just tearing this portion down, then I started to discuss with them how some of the utilities were so, so cross-innovated between the two buildings, there's just no way to just do a little bit. We were gonna spend a, a boatload of money trying to tear a little bit down and then get utilities back to work in, into the fire station, it's just, it's just so intermingled. So, with that, as I've said all along, I'm willing to make, and I don't know how my guys feel about this, but I'm willing to make whatever sacrifice is necessary in order for us to get the absolute best facilities that we can. And I actually believe that this is a better solution. I mean, the only other, the only other idea I have, which, which may not lend well, and I, I already talked to council person alone about it, but I talked about maybe just kind of switching things down and taking half the park, and you could leave the fire station intact if that was the case. You just kind of run from, kind of here down, and then rebuild the park on this side. But we've kind of talked about maybe not touching the park.
Yeah.
Even, even though the park is historic, the grass isn't, it grows new every year. And, and the trees, most of the trees that were original are gone, because they're all on that side. But that would allow us to leave the fire station intact, would benefit Dionne, because he would be able to get new park, new sprinklers, new na-na-na. But it may not necessarily be as conducive to kind of what we've talked about in the past.
Right.
But I'm good with this.
Where would the temporary space be?
I don't, I don't know that you want Scott to handle that, I don't know if you want to go into that, the details of that, but...
Yeah, Big D has found a, an area on the south part of town that would be available, it'd be kind of a warehouse area that has some facilities that could be made into a temporary fire station, essentially. I know that Dave Thomas is, Chief Thomas has checked it out. We, I mean, we, we have an idea, we know what it costs to rent, but we, we would like to negotiate that. We'd like to see if we could get some, you know, a community donation from them, essentially, and try to get it at a discount rate. So, the number you see represented is what we think would be the high end, so just under a hundred thousand. But we have not gotten into serious talks with them, because we needed to make sure that this was something that was okay with the city council before we really got into the idea of signing a lease and, and moving the fire department over.
The, this, the lease per foot, is that an estimate, or is that a quote?
So, in, in the initial discussion, the Big D looked at this space, this is what was quoted as the price.
And do you know if that was a triple net, or it is? Okay. And was there any CAM associated with that?
You'll see that we've included twelve to fourteen months, because we're assuming that, you know, they're not gonna just want an eight-month lease, and you probably need time to move in over there anyway. So, that, that number we've got in there represents twelve to fourteen months.
So, was there a CAM in addition to the square footage cost? Combinatory maintenance? Because seventy-nine cents a foot is actually high for warehouse, but not bad if you're including office space.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's really not that bad, because market right now is, you know, about fifty, sixty cents per foot on warehouse, but it's much higher on office. So, have you looked at the space?
Yeah, we, we met Big D over there. There are five offices, there is a little bit of an open space there. And then there's a very large rear area that is actually larger than our garage space here. So, we could actually park all of our vehicles in there, but we could probably only get a couple of them in and out at any one time, the others would have to be jockeyed around in order for them to get, you know, front and center, so to speak.
But you don't, you don't anticipate like a delay in response time because of that?
So, that's, yes. One, because of its location. It's further south and west. We have, we have only one hurdle between an expeditious response, and that is, there's a railroad track there. But it's that one railroad track that's seldom used. I don't know that there's any switch tracks around there, so I don't know why he would ever park his train over that, over that crossing right there. So, I think that that would normally be clear under every circumstance. But it's over there, it's right next to Kangaroo Zoo.
Yeah.
And it's not a bad space, the, the five offices that are there could be turned into bedrooms. The open space could be kind of the day room for the guys, and we would just have to shoehorn in a couple of extra desks so that we could keep admin going over there.
So, Chief, you're looking at a minimalist approach, then?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of hunkering camping for, indoor camping for about a year?
Oh, yeah, I think it'd be fun.
And they'll be okay? Okay, great.
We, we need to come up with some shower facilities, and there is one other, one other thing, there's a door that is actually a dock door, it's a bay door, it's a dock door. And we have a tough time getting any of our rigs out and down four feet without a ramp.
Absolutely.
And so, we'll probably have to build a ramp for one of them, but it's for our smaller vehicles like ambulances.
We're very cognizant of this idea that it's temporary space, we don't want to put a ton of money into it. We just need to get through the next twelve to fourteen months and not lose our level of service. So, that's, that's foremost on our minds, to get this thing so that we can continue to operate. We will, you know, be working with other agencies, because now that we're a little further south in the city, we might have to use Lone Peak a little bit on the north end, just to help with that. And so, we're, we're working on those solutions, and feel like we have a pretty good way to go as far as providing that service for the next year.
Well, we appreciate the willingness of the staff to, to work within those constraints for a period of time. Council, what questions do you have on this?
Community development, what are you thinking for them?
We're looking at the, the office out at the pipe plant. We're gonna go look at that tomorrow with Dave Houston and Daniel Cardenas, and we're, there's gonna, for the most part, it should be fine, we gotta get the power turned back on, we need to get all the cobwebs out of there.
Power and heat?
Well, the power and heat, air conditioning, whatever. But without, I mean, because we have... But without, I mean, because we haven't fully been running through that, we've just taken a quick look. We feel like that's a pretty good solution. You know, we have to make sure that we can get internet there and things like that, so.
And any other questions? Council chambers?
Council chambers, we're looking at the theater, but Sherry and I need to sit down and work with the arts people, because, you know, they'll have plays and things, and so we've gotta.
Work around that.
We gotta, we, whether we work around that or whether we just, you know, our schedule may be changed, maybe.
But usually, they don't have plays on Tuesday nights. I mean, they would have rehearsals, but they normally don't do plays on Tuesday nights.
It's normally just the idea of moving all their set stuff.
Yeah.
And having us in, because that's, that was part of the reason why we moved over here way back when, is because it was creating a conflict with their practice, their rehearsals.
I'm sure we can come up with something temporary.
We're confident we can. We figure we can do anything for a year here, just to get us where we need to go, so.
So, what does that do to your construction schedule if we're able to pull this off? We know it's awesome, what does that translate to? Money and time? If you could be within two percent.
At this stage, we're not necessarily planning to change. However, there could be some work on the front end due to the street work we don't have to do. But as far as building the, the two buildings, we're not necessarily projecting it faster, it's just not phasing it, is what we're trying to avoid.
Doesn't, isn't it eight months faster? Am I missing something here?
It is eight months, phasing it, yes.
Yes, that's the question, yeah.
So, our intent all along is to have a shovel in the ground October first. That might push back to November first. We feel it critical, we need to get in the ground before winter. So, that's, that's our goal. We, we have, we're working on some of the donations too. We need to get that sorted out a little bit as well before we fully know what our total budget is and what we're working towards. So, in the temporary, we have a plan to move forward, particularly on the fire station. We can start getting that thing designed and get that going. And we're working out a couple logistics on the police station, because there are some square foot considerations at this point that might have to be addressed, and we're still working through that.
Okay.
But everybody is working towards this goal to be in the ground by late, late fall.
Was there something else you wanted to present? Can, can we hear from our owners reps? Guy and Dave, you wanna?
We need to.
A hundred and forty-two will help, right?
We don't need that much money.
Okay. Good.
One or two other considerations. We think we'll save a little bit on demo by doing it all at once. Day's demo.
Yeah, he's correct. Dave brought that up, and we've actually represented that down here on this. Sorry if you guys didn't, if you guys picked this. Yeah, it's on the bottom, like the third line from the bottom, we've, because the, you know, the demo equipment to mobilize that, bring it in, that, that costs some money there, so we've, we've accounted for that.
I think you haven't said too much. I think it's gonna be more efficient for them to build the building, take out the use of the whole side instead of trying to sneak around and get between buildings. We weren't aware of the cost of trying to chop this building off. I guess the main electrical panel, boiler room, everything that's down below is here. And we'd have to figure out a way to electricity and all that, the fire station for you and that expensive proposition. We're, we're in favor of it. He thinks it's good to wait.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you need any more information on this?
I've been getting a lot of questions about when we anticipate demolition occurring.
So, I mean, as we talked about it Thursday, at this point, depending on how quickly we can transition the fire department, we might stay where we're at maybe as long as possible to save a little bit of rent going to another facility. Now, if this facility says, "I have it available on July one, and either, if you don't come by July one, I'm gonna have somebody else come in," then we might just have to move them in July one, and then we can just take everything down. So, a little bit, a little bit of that ties to when we can actually transition the fire department. But other than that, whenever that time is right, that time's right. We, that will be the first order of business. We're still working on the bricks, and Councilmember Lamone's asked us to make sure we get that all figured out so that residents can have opportunity for that. So, to give you a solid date when it's going down, right now, we don't, we just don't have it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Are we okay with moving forward on this?
Mm-hmm.
Did you have other?
So, we might not have the date on the demolition, but do we have kind of the process or can we get that process? Because I know as people come through for the Strawberry Days tours, they're going to be interested in how they get a brick or if they can, and how that's going to work, and that might be a prime opportunity to let them know how that process is going to work. Can we get that answered by then?
Yeah, we're meeting with the historic committee next week.
But I think we also talked about getting someone specific outside of the historic committee as well, who would know about the process of how that works in other communities, or is that the contractor, or who is that?
No, well, Big D, Big D has kind of helped us with the demolition side of, the specialty demolition that comes with that.
Okay.
So, I guess in my mind, we were gonna get things situated with what the historic committee was gonna recommend on how to, on what to do with the bricks and whether we're selling them or giving them away or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And hear from them, and then we can turn around and write the RFP or, or the bid or whatever for the specialty contractor to come in and take it down.
Okay.
But at this point, if that contractor's gonna be taking everything down, it's just, when I say specialty contractor, I think the way that Ben wrote it up was, we just outlined for this building, there's some special things that need to be done. You don't necessarily just come in and bulldoze it.
Right.
Because we need to save brick, or there might be some things internally that need to be saved, because people are gonna want.
Okay.
And so, we just have to write that into the bid document when we do that.
Okay.
And we'll want to do that as soon as possible, so that we have that ready to go. And I'm guessing in the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping we'll have an idea of when that demo's gonna take place.
Okay.
Because I will kind of hinge on, on how we can transition the fire department. And we'll, we will have met with the historic committee by then as well.
When is our next meeting?
It's Thursday next week.
Okay.
Scott, is there a different bucket of funds for the temporary housing, or is that coming out of the available resources we have for the entire construction?
So, we have, we have two different things. We have our budget. So, we have the bond money, we have the impact fee money, and then we have the donor money. We consider that our budget. The donor money is, we have a placeholder in there, we don't exactly know how much that's gonna be, but we have a placeholder that we feel comfortable with. And then, we have, right now, a construction estimate given to us by the contractor and the architect, which we're working right now to bring it down to match what our budget is. So, we're right in the smack dab in the middle of that. So, whether that's eliminating some square feet, or whether that's something on the, on the revenue side, which, you know, that, that's why the donor money does play a little bit of a factor. If there's a little bit more of that than what we're anticipating, then that will help keep this square footage intact. And so, that's, we're still, you know, kind of working through that aspect of it.
And then, the temporary housing, is that coming from the same source?
Yeah, so, I guess what I was trying to explain here is that we have a, currently in our budget, not counting the one fifteen, so we have one, a hundred and forty-two thousand that is currently in the budget. And so, if by doing this, this, you know, this option, then we have forty-two thousand dollars now that we will likely save out of what our current budget is, our, our current construction estimate, because it will cost us a hundred thousand instead of a hundred and forty-two. So, it saves us a little bit, but it is accounted for right now in our cost estimate. The one fifteen's not, but the rest of that money was. That, I'm saying that correctly, is that right? Yeah?
Okay, it's not listed as an, as a voting item, but I think you've heard from the council, they pretty much would like you to proceed forward as, as outlined. Okay? Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We appreciate the progress. Okay, Marty?
Nice to hear, is that okay?
Yeah. Stand anywhere you want, as long as you stand.
I had to stand?
Yeah.
All right. You press number five, Scott?
No. Third time's the charm.
No, we're ready to go here. It's gotta wait for the computer. All right. Whoa. Tonight, I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about, as we've been discussing, roads and funding and those types of things. I wanted to kind of come with the latest and greatest as far as getting another year out there. We're coming up on our three-year plan. We've now went through fiscal years seventeen, sixteen and seventeen. We're looking at eighteen, which is our next year's budget. And then, we've got this question about what's happening in nineteen. And there's a lot of things going on, but we felt it was worth us right now coming up with the next years of plan, of, of funding and how that would be utilized. And so, what we did is we kind of went through the roads and went through our same process of trying to coordinate projects with our upcoming budgets. And these are the roads that we're looking at doing in the next, the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. One of the things I wanted to kind of go back to, we talked about this last week, and I'm gonna zoom in here so that we can see it a little bit better, or a couple weeks ago, we talked about a couple of revisions that we were proposing to make. And in a, in a previous budget, we had planned in this twenty eighteen year to do a road that needs to be done between North County Boulevard and seven hundred south. But there's a lot of development happening in this area right now, and that road needs to actually realign. And so, we felt that was not worth doing at this point, and we proposed that we would move that. And we currently are under contract with, again, Geneva Rock and Newman Construction to do the seven hundred south project from Main Street to four ninety west. And what we're proposing to do is to shift that monies to this project. So, there was two hundred thousand approximately in that thirteenth west project. We're gonna take and move that and do the rest of seven hundred south to essentially nine hundred west. It's Gateway Village entrance. We've got some really poor road here. We're also benefiting off of a utility project, so there's a, an impact fee funded sewer line that, that is extended from four ninety west to here as well. So, we, our coordinated project is that, as well as we've got two developments that are currently underway, one here on this piece of property and then one here. And, and that will benefit greatly to get all of this done at the same time, and that's, that's kind of why we're looking at doing that. This is, this is right now in the works. You'll be seeing some change order recommendations coming forward shortly on getting this work done in that budget year. Again, we've already had the budget in the seventeen and eighteen budget years, so we're just kind of moving the budget into this project rather than the thirteenth west project.
Question, are you crossing the railroad track on that?
We are crossing the railroad track, but we're not doing a full upgrade to the crossing.
Okay.
So, we're going to be raising everything to grade as far as the road's concerned. We've got a water line that's going under there, it's a sixteen-inch water line, and so we'll be boring under that, and then we'll be bringing everything up to grade. Right now, it drops off quite good on the west side of the tracks. We'll be raising that and kind of leveling everything out and really fixing that whole area.
Does the rail company, I mean, like, so they, they're coordinating with you as well as?
Yeah, there's permits and all of that, that we're working on finalizing right now with the contractor, and it's all underway and.
Is that three lane with a passing lane in the middle?
So, what's gonna be constructed right now is the existing pavement width. There is some curb and gutter that's not currently paved to on this side, but we will be paving to that, and we'll be back to the, the widened edge essentially of that. We are not proposing to put curb and gutter all the way along that and getting it to its full width, that'll happen with development. However, these developments here and here, we'll be putting in the curb and gutter, and we're trying to work with the brats, the brats landscaping, brats in Stratton, to do the curb and gutter here. And if we did that, we would have curb and gutter and sidewalk essentially from the Bundage Bone building all the way down, almost to the LDS church, and then we'd just be missing a little bit there in Daulters. So, big, big improvements, as well as Gateway Village redid the road and did it, it's still in pretty good shape. Pleasant Springs Apartments in front of that, it's starting to fall apart. And, and then, obviously, to the east of there, it's really terrible. So, this will really have a really nice road on seven hundred south when we get done with this, all the way from Pleasantville Boulevard. So, be a huge improvement to that area. So, those are the two revised projects. Looking at this upcoming year, we had a lot of discussion. We can, I'll go over the budget in just one minute of, of what this is. We essentially had, I'm wondering if it might be good to show you that first. Give me one second, since my Excel files here. See, many things open. So, kind of looking at an updated budget, this is where we're currently at with, I, I went ahead and extended it out through twenty nineteen, so we already had in the three-year budget through twenty eighteen. One of the things to remember is that we used to have one point five million dollars that was kind of held over in our Class C reserves, and what we did is we proposed to use that over those three years. Previously, we didn't have, in the original three-year plan, we didn't have this additional funding in there that was granted, the hundred and forty thousand dollars. And you can see here that with the latest proposal to now increase that by another hundred thousand dollars, then there would be ongoing of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund transfer into the streets project, so, I mean, to the street projects. Class C revenue funds, those have been, that's what we are expecting to receive. And so, as we look at this, over this fiscal year twenty eighteen, we really haven't changed anything previously, and I would report that I, we're right on schedule with all of these projects. Everything that we've said we're gonna do, we're getting done, they're under the way or planned to be done. So, I, I think we are keeping to what we're saying we're gonna do, and we've been really good with the budgets and feel like we're, we're right in there with, with getting those projects done. Twenty eighteen, you can see here that we have a budget of about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars left over at the end of the twenty eighteen fiscal year. And what we're proposing in fiscal year twenty nineteen is that we use one point four eight five plus this two hundred thousand. So, we're looking at one point six eight five million dollars, and at the end of fiscal year nineteen, we would still have about two hundred and thirty-five thousand in reserves. Now, understand that it makes no sense for us to use every dime because of the way we have to function, and every year, you know, we, we have projects, you can't just take it and go halfway through the block and cut it off. And so, it didn't make sense for us to try to get it exact to the dollar. So, every year, expect to see that there's gonna be some reserves left over. At least that's what we would propose. It'd be very difficult for us to get in and plan out very small projects when we can carry those over and do a bigger project the following year. So, these are, these are the planned projects that, the one point four eight five million dollars that we're proposing for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, so this will happen not this year, but in July of twenty eighteen is when those could start. And that's what the attached map is showing you. Green lines are pavement preservation or seal coats. The orange line is the overlay, and that's currently on Murdoch Drive between eleven hundred north and down to almost five hundred north. And then, that's a coordinated project with a water line replacement that needs to be done. We've talked about eleven hundred north previously. That would go from essentially first east to the canal. I believe I said it was a thousand, it's only seven hundred east approximately to the canal. But that would be a coordinated storm drain and water line service replacement project. And then, we've got some really rough roads up here. We feel like if we don't get these done soon, that they're gonna fall into a full reconstruct. Right now, as Joan and I went and looked at these, we felt that we could get them done with kind of a mill and pave, which is about half the cost of a full reconstruct. And so, we felt it was worthwhile for us to get those done. And we, and talking with Greg as well, coordinating with the water lines, we feel like that we can, we wouldn't need to replace the water lines under. can, we wouldn't need to replace the water lines under those roads. We haven't had any leak problems or issues out there. So we're proposing to do those project, that project as well. If any of you have driven those roads, it's badly needed. The other project that we've talked about doing, again, this one kind of showed up as on the border of a reconstruct, and we feel like if we get it now, we might be able to kind of avert needing to do a full reconstruct in the future. The water line was already replaced in thirteen hundred east previously, and so we have a good candidate for a nice road to be done. And it's in very poor condition as well. And so those are kind of some bigger projects that we're proposing to do with this next year's budget or the fiscal year twenty nineteen budget. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about any of them.
Currently, we, we allocate somewhere around seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven sixty-seven for bond payment. You're looking at five fifty-six, five hundred, which means there's a, an additional two hundred and ten thousand of free cash that's going to go towards your road projects in twenty eighteen.
In twenty eighteen, right.
Right. And you're gonna end up with three hundred and sixteen thousand left over. So the additional spend is what?
Oh, I'm getting to that.
Actually going to roads.
For some reason, I... So, kind of looking at where we were ending up at, at twenty seventeen, looking at what we're planning to expand, which was nine hundred and thirty thousand. You can see here that we've, this last year, we, I think we paid off the bond in March, so we have about three or four months of payments that we're not making in that year. This is the amounts that we have coming from Class C in this and the carryover from the reserves that we're proposing to use. So we're showing that we'd have about three hundred and fifteen thousand left over at the end of that fiscal year with the current planned projects without increasing anything. I don't know if, did that answer your question as far as how that...
Are we spending more on pavement or less in twenty eighteen?
Compared to twenty seventeen, a little less.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, we're going from one point two million dollar project, of projects down to seven hundred and thirty. The other thing I need to say is, if you look here, Mayor, talking with John, we currently have about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we're putting into this, this kind of additional expenses. One of the things that I'm noticing is that we need to do a lot more crack sealing projects or we need to get going on that. And, and so we propose to increase that budget so we could do that over in the next few years. What you'll see happen is, once we get caught up with all of our crack sealing, then we'll be able to drop that back, back, back down to the, the one thirty, one fifty number.
What does that do for the life of a road when you crack seal?
It, it prevents water, the idea of it is to stop the water from going into those cracks and getting under that pavement. So when we get the frost and the freezing, that it doesn't bust up the pavement. And so, huge benefit if we can get them sealed, then the water penetration doesn't occur and then we can preserve those roads, so.
And, and how long would you say a crack seal lasts?
Two to three years, it kind of depends. It isn't, it isn't an ongoing, I mean, you, you can redo it after that time to where you don't have to do a full, complete crack seal on the entire road. You can just hit those areas that are not fully covered. But for the most part, it's usually a two to three-year type fix. It's just a kind of a holdover. And asphalt's gonna crack over time. And so just keeping the water out is critical. So we need to do more of that. There hasn't been a lot of budget to do that in the past, and, and so we do appreciate anything extra there.
Is that more economical, like, if you needed to stretch, if you needed to stretch your dollars so that your, some of your roads don't deteriorate as quickly while you focus on the ones that you need to be repairing in your current year? If we put more money towards crack sealing, would that buy you anything as far as the road won't be in as bad a condition when you get to it?
Sure. Any, anytime you don't do any preventative maintenance, which a crack seal would be preventative maintenance, then you're decreasing the life of that road. And so, yeah, anymore, and that's why, kind of looking at this, we said, this makes a lot of sense for us to get caught up on all of our crack sealing and really put some effort into that because it will extend the life of the roads. Now, there's, there's roads that you can't, you know, get all the cracks done. It's not worth really spending a lot of money on because there's, there's no way to really get them all done. But those that, like Second South right now, if you've driven up that, maybe look at it, there's, there's some widened cracks there. It'd be a great time now to get that crack sealed. And that would be one of the projects that we'd do this next year is getting that done, so.
So I guess what I'm asking is, I'm looking at the amount that you're gonna carry over at the end of each year. There's a bulge in twenty eighteen. What would it do for us if you spent some of that on more crack seal rather than held onto it?
We could do that as well. We proposed an additional seventy thousand because of that. That's a lot of crack seal.
Right.
Because we're already planning twenty or thirty thousand.
What if you doubled it? How much additional crack seal would you get? And you'd still end up with two hundred and, you know, fifty thousand.
Yeah, and so right now, I'm proposing in twenty nineteen, we'll only have two thirty-five, Mayor. So if we did that, then it would reduce our fiscal year twenty nineteen budget down to, like you're saying, we'd still have a hundred, even if we did another hundred thousand, we'd still have a hundred and thirty-five thousand left in reserves.
With today, with what we know today about the funding?
Correct.
But if there's a change in the funding between now and nineteen, you've effectively extended the life of some of your road until that money becomes available to work on it.
Sure. That makes some sense.
What else, Marty?
Um, just if anybody else has any questions, that's...
Questions, Council?
Awesome, thank you, Marty. When can we get this on the website, the updated version?
So I'm gonna add this to our plan and change it to the next three years. So we'll be showing seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen on that. I should have it ready this week, the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, let's look at our twenty, at our, excuse me, our, I'm working in years now. Let's look at our May sixteenth proposed agenda. Nine A, a public hearing to consider ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-five, amending the city code regarding approval of final plats. And there's a whole list. Amendments will provide for administrative approval of minor final plats and have, that have three or less lots. Daniel, are you covering this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, let's just wait a little bit for the...
Oh, sorry, did you, were you just doing it from your surface?
No, 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 it's already in the computer.
Okay, so we'll go back to...
Well, I can start without the images. When the image comes in, I'll point at them. So this one, it has to do, it is a code amendment regarding the final stages of approval process for, for plats. When we get in the process of approving a plat, first goes to the staff posted review, then eventually gets to Planning Commission. Planning Commission gives a recommendation of approval, and then it comes to you guys. And then you guys do the final approval, and I think, Mayor, you're the one who signs them. So what, do we have the remote, so I can go out right here? So what we are proposing is that make a clear distinction between the type of plats that we receive. So we propose, the staff proposes, that everything, any plat that includes three or less lots be considered a minor plat. And every plat that has four or more is considered a major plat. Now, what we are proposing here is that when it's a minor plat, it still has to go through Planning Commission for the public hearing, but it doesn't come to you guys for final approval. But instead of that, Marty or staff are the ones who do the, the, the final approval and sign it. So pretty much we're taking that, if it's a minor plat, we're taking that weight away from you, put it on staff. So that's, that's what it is.
And it affects all of those sections that are listed?
Correct.
If you recall, I'm sorry, if you recall, Ken did bring this idea to the council previously, and you directed him to proceed, so.
Yes.
And, and the final part of the amendment of this, that is involved with the plat, is that for the last year, since I started having the opportunity to work here with you guys, we've been doing, trying to go to paperless. Okay, so we're not gonna require any more copies. We're saving a couple trees right there, and we're just gonna go to the electronic format. Okay? That's, that's the, the language of the proposed approval. Well, that's one of them. It, it's, as you can see, it's a, there's a lot. So every single place where there's a, referring to a plat, now we make this distinction between a minor plat, a major plat, and this is how it's gonna get approved now.
So it's just the minor plats that you're not gonna require the paper?
No, for any plat, for all plats.
And the county's okay with accepting those electronically?
No, that's just for the reviewing process. At the end, you still have to have a mailer.
Thank you. Okay, any questions?
Sounds good.
All right. B is to consider for adoption ordinance two thousand seventeen twenty-six regarding the mailing of notices on public hearings for land use ordinances and requiring that the notice be sent to property owners affected by the ordinance change unless the change generally and equally affects all properties within a particular district or within the entire city.
Okay, Mayor, so right now, at this point, when we want to notice an item for any application, we notice it in five different ways. Okay? Number one, we post it on the website. Number two, we physically put the agenda or the notice on the, on the three buildings, on the library, City Hall, and here in our building. We also, yeah, post it in the newspaper. I go and personally hammer a sign on the property. And finally, we send mailers, okay? Those cards that we send to everyone. So we do it in those five ways. When the, when the amendment to the code or whatever, the proposal that is coming to us, it applies to the whole zone or to the entire city, we don't send notices, we don't send the mailers. We still try to, we still accomplish the other forms or the other ways of, of noticing, but the mailers are not sent to everyone in the city. That was kind of like implicit, and, and we haven't done it, or especially when, I mean, when we changing for entire zone, we also don't send the mailers. But that language was not, is not in the ordinance at this point. So it's a little ambiguous, if we may say, because it's not specific to saying that if it's for the entire zone or the entire city, we don't have to send the mailers. And what we're doing right here is just being clear on that. So each property owner whose land is directly affected by the land use ordinance, oh, this is who's gonna get the, the mailers, okay? Each property owner whose land is directly affected by the land use ordinance change unless the change generally and equally affects all properties within a particular zoning district or within the entire city. For anything else, even for areas that, and I don't know if you guys recall these applications, but lately, we have had some amendments to use a particular street and geographical spot, I will still send it to everyone involved within or affected within three hundred feet. But if it's the zone or the city, we don't, we won't have to do it.
What, what precipitated this?
Uh, we just wanna be clear on that, and I, I think it was regarding what happened to the bill, the amendments we did lately to the five-story building and the area. I still did send it. What I did is I, I mapped it out, the entire area, because it wasn't just, the amendment wasn't just for that site, but it was for the entire street I might said. And what I did, I, I still went ahead and found everyone who was three hundred, not just that, but we also, we didn't send it to the property owners, but we also went ahead and did it to the business owners. But now someone asks us, are you guys gonna do that now when it applies to the entire zone? And that will require a lot of effort, a lot of resources, a lot of money to send to everyone in a particular zone.
So this is reflecting our practice because it was not clear whether we needed to do that or not. We wanna make it clear that if we're doing something, if we have to notice every resident on a certain thing, that gets into the thousands of dollars for us. And so we're just making it clear, if it's citywide or if it's for a zone, then we'll do our other noticing, but we're not sending out particular mailers. If it's, if it's, you know, like A and B there, then that will be the common practice. And this is really how we've always been doing it. We're just cleaning up the code as far as what our practice is and staying within law.
Questions for staff? So we are compliant with the state law on this? Okay. All right. Item C, public hearing to consider for adoption ordinance two thousand seventeen twenty-seven, amending the code ten eleven, ten dash eleven E downtown village zone by combining provisions of chapter ten dash thirteen C mixed-use overlay zone into the downtown village commercial sub-district and revising and combining the provisions regarding permitted uses densities and various zoning requirements in the commercial and transitional sub-districts. Is this you again?
Yes, sir. Okay, so this has been my baby for the last couple of months. It's pretty much, we're changing what's going on right now with the downtown, in the downtown village zone. Right now, we have a zone, but within the zone, we have two sub-districts, one overlay. A little convoluted, I think. If you try to find out what the regulations are for a certain area, it's quite difficult right now. You have to try to go find it. So what I'm trying to do is simplify them a little bit. Here are what my, 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 my objective, what I'm trying to do with this amendment, to the consolidation of the three different zones in the area. From three, I'm proposing to reducing it to two. Pretty much, I'm taking away the overlaid and mesh, mash it with the commercial sub-district and keep the, the buffer zone still in this place, the transitional zone. And I'll explain a little bit in, in the map later on. Another thing that I'm trying to do here is conditional uses, the elimination of conditional uses. A lot of cities are already going through, through that path. What happens in a conditional use, and I'm just gonna take a couple seconds to say this, you bring it to Planning Commission, and a conditional use should be approved based on certain conditions that should be already established in an ordinance, right? So what I'm proposing, and what a lot of cities are doing at this point, is creating those conditions, call them, I'm gonna call them development standards. And instead of bringing it to the Planning Commission and use all the resources, staff can do that. So if someone brings an application for a certain use, the staff makes sure that, 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 that use complies or the proposal complies with certain standards already written in an ordinance. And I wrote a couple of, more than a couple, but some standards for different type of uses. So what I'm doing is removing those conditional uses, making them permitted with development standards. And the third one, trying to do a little rearrangement of the density ratios per zone. So to make it simple, I reduce the density a little bit. Here's what I'm, what I'm telling you about the different zones that we have right now. We have the transitional sub-district, or what I like to call the buffer area, between commercial and single-family residential. But then we have the commercial sub-district, and on top of that, we have a mixed-use overlay. So what I'm proposing is taking away the mixed use and extending that to the whole commercial sub-district. And it's gonna look something like that. Now, if you guys, yeah, something like that. So far, do you guys have a question before I get too, too into this? Okay, so the same situation at this point, every zone and if we, every zone and every sub-district and every overlaid has a different density ratio at this point. So I'm combining them and making them like that. So in the transitional sub-district, the staff is proposing to have single-family allowed, duplexes will be allowed. Now, the minimum square footage for a lot in the transitional sub-district is five thousand square feet. So I'm saying, if you're gonna do a, a single family, it's okay, duplex is okay. If you wanna jump to a triplex, then you need to increase the square footage to go to seventy-five hundred. And multifamily, for any multifamily project in the zone, the density will be ten units per acre. Right now, it's twelve units per acre. So I went down to, to units per acre. I, I did a little study of the MT parcels, and I think that's a number that is in the vast interest of the city. For the commercial, uh, commercial.
Commercial.
For, sorry, for the commercial sub-district, what I'm proposing is to let single families still being allowed, duplexes being allowed as well, and multifamily only allowed if commercial comes with it. So for the, the density that I'm proposing is for every one thousand square feet of commercial or retail, then you can have three units. That's right now what we have. That's right now what we have in the mixed use. So I'm just expanding that to the entire zone. What, the, the reason for that is we like to promote more retail. If you wanna go multifamily, if you wanna have more units, that's fine with us. Just bring us, show us the money. No, 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 but show some retail, show some retail. That's, that's what we're trying to do.
Which is the same thing.
So that, that's what, that's what.
You gotta yell it louder.
That's, that's the, it, it basic. I mean, we're eventually gonna bring this to you guys during the next meeting, but this is the synopsis, the synopsis.
Questions for Daniel?
Can I just say, there's a lot going on there, obviously. And the planning commission has, have they looked at this one yet, Daniel?
Yes, sir. Planning commission has given a recommendation of approval. I've been working with this with Ken, but also I appreciate the effort that Tina has put into this to work with me.
This, this is good. Is that recommendation unanimous, Daniel? Do you know what the planning commission?
No, no.
Do you remember what the vote was?
Yes, it was, we had five members and it was four to one.
Daniel, when you say.
The, the, you want me to expand on that or?
Yeah, I'd like to understand what some of the concerns were.
Okay, so one of the, the, the reason why, let's see if I can say it the right way. So a commissioner wanted to have more regulations regarding the access to parking structures. So I, when we talked to, I, I tried to explain that that would be when it comes to a site plan approval. We'll for sure look into this, those things. But I don't, we don't have in any zone at this point, any regulations regarding the access to parking structure or any parking in general. So we'll kept, we'll kept it like that. And at the time that a site plan comes to us, then we'll review the access to, to those, to those areas. That was the only reason, in the, in the rest of it, the commissioner agreed.
When you talk about having residential only if they bring in realist, retail or commercial, are you talking about within the same building or separate structures?
Within the same building.
Okay.
Within the same building.
Daniel, how long have you worked for the city now?
A year and two weeks.
Okay.
No one's counting, though.
Usually they count backwards.
I just wanna say thank you. You have been, you just jumped in, and I know the time and the research that you put into these agenda items. I know you work a lot with Tina in making sure that everything you're doing is following, you know, city and state ordinance. I've gotten nothing but, you know, compliments from residents who worked with you and business owners. Your response, you get back quickly, and then you come prepared to these meetings. And I just really appreciate the vision that you have for the city, especially with going through these different zones and being proactive and trying to, you know, do what's best for our community. And, and I think we saw that with what happened behind costume craze. So just thank you for the time and effort you're putting in. And I know you're very, very busy, and there's probably no time for, you know, to rest and, but thank you for doing all this. I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate it. I, I'm extremely grateful for the opportunity to work with you guys.
Thank you.
No, no, thank you.
All right. Item D is a public hearing to consider for adoption ordinance two thousand seventeen twenty dash twenty-eight, amending the city code regarding the regulation of accessory structures. Will provide for the establishment of metal shipping containers in the RR, RR R one and RM seven zones.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is, this proposal hasn't gone to planning commission yet. It's coming to the next planning commission, which is in a couple of days. What we're trying to do here is lately, I've been having applications regarding or proposals regarding the, bringing shipping containers in people's front yards, backyard, side yards. And also, we have had some complaints regarding some neighbors using them. So what we're trying to do now is trying to come up with some regulations. It looks like this is becoming popular. A trend, yeah. So what we're trying to do now is, is put some regulations that will allow us to still keep the sense of the neighborhood residential, okay? So pretty much what we're doing is asking to have a, that the, the, the shipping container should have a design that complements the residential environment. We specifically refer to metal shipping containers, and they may be only used if the exterior is designed and modified with additional materials to complement the residential environment. Maybe some wood siding, something that makes it look like it's part of the neighborhood. So that's what we're proposing with this.
Any questions? Okay, item E, public hearing to consider for adoption ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-nine, amending a long list of sections relating to replacement of Pleasant Grove City Board of Adjustment with a hearings officer, which is a different type of an appeal process or appeal authority.
Thank you, Mayor. So right now, we have an appeal authority, and it's mentioned multiple times in our code. That's why we have different sections. It looks like you guys already talked about this also in your, the meeting that you guys have. What's the name of it?
Our planning retreat.
The retreat, the retreat. I was gonna say the retirement, but not the retreat.
Not yet.
So you guys talked about this during the retreat. Right now, the city, the city has a appeal, appealing authority, which is, is reflected in the board of adjustments that we have. I've had the opportunity to work with them, the, the great people. We have, we've been working together. What we're proposing now is to change that appealing authority to, instead of being a group or a board, to being into a single person, which is gonna be a land use hearing officer or a hearing officer. So it looks again like you guys already discussed this. I don't know, Tina, you have something to add to this?
No, just, this is just implementing what we discussed at the planning retreat regarding the ability to keep a board, a volunteer boarding commission as trained and up to date on the legal challenges as would be necessary. And this seems to be a more efficient way to handle appeals, land use appeals. The other thing I would note is the ordinance itself, based on some conversations that I believe we've had, that this would not take effect until June thirtieth, July one, with the new budget year. The ordinance will have a different effective date than what you're used to seeing. Normally, it will say effective upon passage and posted, postage by law. This will have an effective date of June thirtieth, okay? That gives a transition period for the board of adjustments and gives us time to get someone hired so that we don't have a gap between having no legal appeal authority by ordinance and yet haven't gotten a hearings officer on board yet.
Any questions for staff?
That's contractual or is that?
Yes.
It will be a contractual arrangement.
It's an appointment. I mean, for them to be hired, it's appointed. But then the, the contract will be per, I don't know if it's necessarily per hour or per hearing or whatever.
It, it can vary. It's whatever we decide we wanna do.
So we'll, we'll figure that out. It's very minimal. I mean, the board of adjustment would meet maybe three times a year. So the costs we can absorb into the current budget without too much trouble.
Other questions?
I'm curious if we've done anything to solicit the opinions of our current board of adjustment members on this change and if we have that information.
Yeah, the mayor met with them to let them know that this was a direction we were gonna head. I don't know, Mayor, did you get any feedback from them?
They were, they were generally understanding. There was no objections, if you will. And we did offer them opportunities to serve in other areas within the city. Any other questions? Okay. We didn't really talk about all of the other items in there. Does that mean that it's all related to this?
Yes, sir, yes. It's just because we, your ordinance mentions the appealing authority of the board of adjustments.
Just change every one?
Correct, change every single one, correct.
And anyone that we missed, you'll just change it, okay? So item F is a public hearing to consider for adoption in ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirty, amending the city code Title III, Chapter sixteen, transient merchants and street vendors, amending section three dash sixteen dash four definitions and adding subsection sixteen B mobile food trucks, regulating the licensing and permitting requirements for food trucks, amending subsections seven and nine to remove booking requirements, bonding requirements.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment, a project that I've been working on for the last couple of months. Didn't take me that long, but what happened is that state was working on a bill regarding food trucks. Again, this is something that is very, becoming very popular within the state of Utah. So this, this ordinance actually comes in two parts. Tina took her, took care of one, which was the licensing part of it. And I took care of the land use part of it, okay? So the, the licensing and the land use, they're best friends, but they're in different parts of the ordinance. One, again, is in regarding to the, the fees, the, what it needs to have a business license. And the part that I wrote is regarding the land use. This item already went to planning commission, the land use part. There's a couple of, well, the staff came up with this version of what I think is the best for the city. The applicant didn't agree with it, so they come with their own version on, of it, of what they are suggesting it should be. Planning commission already took a vote on it. They vote, there was seven people, seven commissioners, and the vote was six to one in, in favor of voting for the staff version of the ordinance.
When you say they came with their own ordinance, is that what you're saying?
Yes. So they came with their own proposal. And pretty much the difference between the proposals is that staff is recommending or is giving the, proposing to the city that food trucks should be mobile. The, the main reason why the state passed the bill or was working on the bill was to allow him for any food truck, for example, that gets a business license in Orem, Ogden, or St. George with that business license to be able to operate anywhere within the state. So they, they understand the mobility factor that comes with a food truck. So staff is recommending that a food truck be also mobile within the city. And the applicant seems to be favoring the option of being a permanent. So it looks like they chose a, a spot where they want to be, which is right there in the map. That's the picture that I took of the, the place we would like to be permanent. Again, planning commission voted six to one to go in favor of the version of the staff, which is to keep the mobility factor of a food truck into effect.
Questions for staff?
You're talking back to the four days at one spot?
Yes.
Okay.
And by, and staff also considers that by mobility, it doesn't mean you have to move every single day. But you can be in one spot at least four days of the week, which is more than fifty percent of the day of the week. You can be in one spot, but after that, you have to move to a different spot.
Every night, I think they have to go to a commissary?
For sure, but every food truck, every food truck has to do that because they have to empty the, the gray water, they have to prepare the food at the commissary and things like that. So regardless of that, they have to, yeah, every food truck has to go back to the commissary every night.
What about public versus private property?
We don't, right now, I don't think we allow food trucks on public property.
Oh, we do with the, with the permission of, with the permission of the director. No, and with also with the permission of the director of public and, no, it's public parks, Dion, pretty much. They have to go and talk to Dion, see if they can park in the, in public places. Not anymore.
And they have to get with, sorry, Mayor, bathrooms, things like that? They work that out with the surrounding businesses?
That, that's a requirement from the health department, and it looks like health department allows them to be. I, I don't know exactly what the requirements are. But I mean, that, this doesn't exempt them still from having to go to the health department and comply with their requirements. So the, the one with the bathroom is more of a health department issue.
I'll tell you, the biggest concern with staff when we talked about this was this idea that somebody would have a food truck and they'd park it on a corner, and that would be in lieu of a brick and mortar restaurant. And that would, so in essence, we could have these things popping up on private property all over our city and just, you know, popping down for seven days and just really in perpetuity to be able to operate a restaurant. And I don't, we don't think that's necessarily fair to the brick and mortar people who are investing in and paying a property tax in that manner, whereas we have these individuals. And we look at food trucks, the, the intent of those is generally that they are mobile. And so most of these were what, three days that we looked at? We felt four days was a compromise on our end. But that's what was kinda driving us as we looked at this. It just, this, this in a way is, let's pop it down on a corner. I don't now, I do not now have to build a brick and mortar, and I get all the benefits.
What about this? This is a snowshack.
That, that is a, that is a, that is a lack of code enforcement.
It shouldn't be.
It shouldn't be there year round.
What happens is in, in the month of October, staff visited that place. It was even a little worse, there were more structures right there. And we kind of make an arrangement because the applicant gave us some reasons and staff was understanding of the situation and allowed them to be there just the end of this year. But after, we have to be a little more cut off in our code enforcement and enforce it, yeah, that's.
So it will be universally applicable?
Yes, sir.
What about, sorry, what about power? Because don't, you see the power coming across and so then.
That's, that's a good comment, sorry.
I just don't think we should talk too much about it because it's not the public hearing and it's not, I mean, it's just, I don't know, because I brought this up before.
Yeah, I think we should just stick with what the ordinance says right now. And if you have questions about the ordinance, but I don't think we should get into discussing the, the individual's proposal in terms of questions about power and all of that because they're not here and they're not able to, to respond at this point. And, yeah.
Maybe if I can just say one more thing before I, I close this is that, you know, you know, yes, you're right. We should, so I, I'm gonna present this item during the next planning commission because I've been working on this, so I'll present it, okay?
You mean next week here?
Yes.
Okay.
In the next city council meeting.
Okay, perfect.
And I'll be doing the Title III part on the business licensing, okay?
All right. Section ten, item A is a continued item to consider for adoption of resolution two thousand seventeen dash zero three one, authorizing the mayor to enter into an inter-local cooperative agreement between Utah County and Pleasant Grove City for the administration of the two thousand seventeen municipal election by vote, by mail, and providing for an effective date.
So we're working with the county on that. Kathy has a meeting, was it Thursday, with the recorders in the county to iron out some of the questions and loose ends on the agreement. We're gonna keep the placeholder on here. If we get everything figured out, we'll have it ready for you on Tuesday. If there's still questions in our mind, we'll continue it to another day. But we're hoping to get all the, all the bugs worked out on that.
Item B, to consider for adoption ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirty-one, amending Title two dash two E beautification and shade tree advisory commission of Pleasant Grove Municipal Code by implementing a water conservation program, providing an avenue to elect a secretary treasurer historian and other housekeeping changes and providing for an effective date.
Yeah, so Mark Bishop, the chair, will be here to present that. Pretty basic. They just kinda wanna reflect in the ordinance what they've been doing and would like to continue to do. So it's really pretty basic, so.
Item C, consider for adoption, a proclamation declaring May twenty-first, two thousand seventeen to May twenty-seventh as American Red Cross Week.
We received a request from the American Red Cross to declare that week as American Red Cross Week in conjunction with their celebrating their one-hundredth anniversary. It does meet our policy guidelines with regards to presenting proclamations for your approval in terms of it being a nationally recognized service organization. So that's.
Okay. Item D, to consider for adoption in ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirty-two, amending Title one, Chapter seven, elections of Pleasant Grove City Municipal Code to comply with recent changes in the election laws of the state of Utah regarding campaign finance regulations and providing for an effective.
This really is just a housekeeping item in terms of making our local code consistent with the recent changes from the two thousand seventeen state legislature. There isn't a lot of, of new material. The most important thing is that it defines what an anonymous contribution is in a little more detail. And then also give some detail with how to report anonymous contributions and what needs to be on a financial disclosure statement for candidates.
Item E, to consider for adoption, a resolution two thousand seventeen dash zero three one, amending fees for compiling, formatting, manipulating, packaging, summarizing, certifying, or tailoring records under Pleasant Grove City Government Records Access Management Act and providing for an effective date.
So we have a fee schedule for. So we have a, a fee schedule for responding to grandma requests, our fee schedule have, has not been updated in probably 10 years, and this new fee schedule makes a slight increase in the hourly rate from $10 to $12.50. It also makes a slight change in the amount of time that is given for free before charging starts. In the old statute, it was, the first 20 minutes was free, in the new legislative state statute, I believe it's 15 minutes, so we have made that change as well.
And I think that's it. Okay, coming back to tonight, neighborhood and staff business, Libby? Daniel? Sherry?
No.
So Daniel and I sitting next to each other is kind of fun, because 11 years ago, when we first met, neither of us would have guessed we'd be doing this, that either of us would be in these positions, so you never know what, where life's gonna take you, but I'm, I, I feel like a very proud teacher.
Oh, really?
I know.
No.
Where did you guys meet, we want to hear the story?
It's because, do you want to go?
Sure. So in my previous life, I was an English as a second language teacher, that's what I did until September 11th, killed the school where I was teaching, and I decided to go a different direction and went to get a master's in library science. So I came back from Hawaii where I got my master's, and was teaching ESL again while I was looking for library jobs, and Daniel was one of my students.
Wow.
And, I know. I take all credit, and when I first saw him here, I kept looking at him and thinking, he looks so familiar, but you know, it'd been a long time, and finally I said, were you at an ESL school, you know, back, way back when? And then he said, yeah, you look familiar too, so, yeah, it's fun.
Cool.
That's great.
And.
It looks like I needed to learn English to be here, right, so?
Yeah.
Before I, before I went to college, there's a test you need to pass, a tough little test, and, yeah, they prepared me for that test, so I, she wasn't one of my teachers.
Cool, that's awesome.
And we have our big program this Friday at 6:30, and we will begin it with a big announcement, where he who shall not be named will be named, and a few other cool things, so, and I know the mayor will be out of town, but I, but I look forward to seeing the rest of you.
Yeah, we'll be in official council meeting, so we will need at least three of you there.
So here, in this room?
At the library.
We are meeting at the library.
Yeah.
Starting at 6:30?
6:30, yes.
On the dot, my staff is really nervous, but we're gonna eat up too much time with this.
Hey, Tina? Nothing, Scott?
Uh, right now, we were scheduled to have a meeting on the 23rd with our planning commission, Ken reached out to the planning commission, they did not have any items that they needed to discuss, so we will cancel that meeting. However, on the 30th, we have a developer that's in a rush and needs an approval and cannot wait till June 6th, so we would like to hold a meeting on the 30th of May.
So no meeting next, on the 23rd?
No meeting on the 23rd, but a meeting on the 30th. And I know that's coming off a holiday weekend, we have enough council members to, to do that.
All right, David?
Nothing.
Nothing, Dionne?
Just thanks for showing up Saturday, fun event, and $10,000, we'll take any, any bit, any bit we can, so, thank you.
Appreciate it. Dave? Nothing, Mike?
We have two officers that will be graduating from the police academy, it's been a, a long road getting them through that, so we've been short all since the first of the year, these two officers, Joey Hawes will graduate tomorrow night from the UVU Academy, and then Gilbert Sanchez will graduate Thursday afternoon from, uh, Police Academy from Post up in Salt Lake, so we're excited to get those guys going, and they'll have anywhere from two-month to three-month filled training, just depending on how quick things go for them, and then we should be back to full staff.
That's great.
Cross my fingers.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Marty? No? Kathy? Diana?
Yes, I do have one thing I, oh, and knowing how to move forward, um, last week in open session.
Nobody said anything.
Thank you, I didn't want to eat my nuts while I was loudly. So last week in open session, Lori Duke stood up, she lives on 300 East, and was a, which is a residential neighborhood, but also in the transition zone, and a car dealership began. Since that time, and I don't know what occurred, but she texted me a couple days later and said that the cars were all leaving, and then she texted me a couple days later and said that the business sign was down, and then she texted me a couple days later and said that there was a for sale sign on the property. On our zoning map, there is that, the only piece that is commercial is that, it's actually three different.
Three lots.
There's three parcels that make up the one lot. So I, I know that it's for sale, I know that there is an owner, I'm wondering what happens, how we go about changing the zone into something that's more conducive to the neighborhood.
We just need direction from the council to proceed on the rezone, and we will do that.
Okay, is there any objection to that? Why don't you go ahead and prep that?
Yeah, and there's issues with some of the zoning rights that might stay intact, and we'll get into all that when we need to, but we'll get, working on that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Diana?
No, thank you very much.
Sid?
Yeah, a question, Tina, where are we at with that ordinance from a few weeks ago about not being able to hold two elected offices at one time?
Oh, I haven't worked on it yet, but I will.
Okay, and then, speaking of the trail opening, ribbon cutting, we had an email from Jason Cowley a few weeks ago that I just want to read, it's in relation to Dionne, and I'll just read the, the last paragraph, but it says, Dionne is not aware that I am writing to you, I, you might by now, because I think I sent on to you, but, he says he'll probably be more than a little embarrassed by this letter, but I really want the city to know the value of this great man on our staff, this is from Jason Cowley, who worked closely with Dionne for the past couple years, but I really wanted the city staff to know the value of this great man on our staff, and I would urge whoever is in control of recognition and merit for his position to seriously consider what he has done and continues to do for the city that he loves. After three years of working with him, I consider him a friend and have the highest respect for him, and I hope that our city leadership can consider this in all future decisions regarding the Parks and Recreation Department. And being involved with the project as well, not as closely as Dionne, but I can tell you how much went into the project from Dionne and his, his crew, and it was literally blood, sweat, and tears for years to make that happen, and there's hundreds and thousands of people enjoying the trail now because of what you guys did, so, thank you for working with Jason and making his vision come true, and in turn, a whole community was able to use the trail, so, thank you, Dionne.
Thank you, Dionne. Anything else?
No.
Lynn? Good? Ben?
I'm good.
All right, I'll be gone on Friday till Sunday, so you're, you're it. Okay, if there's no other business, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I made the motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Please.